Trustee Davis.
Here.
Trustee Aiello. Trustee Bulthis. Trustee Taglia.
Here.
Trustee Case.
Here.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Here.
President Colleton.
Here. And tonight, Venus Gisakalas is sitting in for Village Manager Rich Keener, who has gone for the week. Trustee Bulthis and Trustee Aiello both, I believe, have vacations planned for this week due to spring break activities. It's a shame it's not 80 degrees for all the kids who are home from spring break this year. Probably making everybody chaotic inside the house. All right, if we could please stand and Dan Corning, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice.
Could all remain standing. Trustee Taglia, could you lead us in a prayer, please?
Certainly. Our heavenly Father, will thou be pleased to grant that this meeting thus begun in order, be conducted in peace, and closed in harmony. Amen.
And for those of you who are new to our meetings, the way this works, just before everybody will start to go through the agenda, there is item number five. If you don't have an agenda, right up at the door, their agenda is printed. Item number five is public comments on agenda items, so that would be anything on our list. Item number 15 is public comments on non-agenda items, so if you wish to speak on a non-agenda item, that is your time. And on the committee of the whole, if you wish to speak on that item, after each item on the committee of the whole, there will be time for public commentary. So with that, we will go to item three, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
I move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Second.
Questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Here.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item four, village president's report. Proclamation designating April 8th through 14th, 2012, National Library Week. All right. Proclamation designating April 8th through 14th, 2012, National Library Week. Whereas libraries have historically served as our nation's greatest equalizers of knowledge by providing free access to all, whereas libraries work to meet the changing needs of their users, including building collections, expanding outreach services, and increasing programming. Whereas our nation's libraries provide a forum for diverse ideas and points of view that help us better understand each other and ourselves, whereas librarians are trade professionals, helping people of all ages and backgrounds find and interpret the information they need to live, learn, and work in a challenging economy. Whereas librarians design and offer programs to meet their community's economic needs, providing residents with resume-writing classes, interviewing workshops, and job-seeking resources. Whereas libraries are part of the American dream, places for education, opportunity, and lifelong learning. Whereas librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week, therefore, be it resolved that I, Thomas Colleton, village president, proclaim National Library Week, April 8th through 14th, 2012, and I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of all the wonderful library resources available at your library. You belong at our library. And do you have anything to say for National Library Week?
Thank you very much. Our National Library Week is going to be very busy this year. We have a program on Monday, April 9th, about black holes. We have a program on Tuesday, April 10th, with Kate Bradley showing residents how to make super salad soups. We have National Poetry Month reading on Wednesday, April 11th, following the Friends meeting, so I would invite all of you to find your favorite poem and come out and read it. And then we have a concert on Saturday, April 14th, at 7:00 p.m. Peter Abruski sings "Favorite American Standards." So we have lots of programs and services we offer, and we welcome you every day of the year, not just National Library Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, come and visit our library. Everybody, my kids enjoy it, I enjoy it. I think it's a wonderful place, so come and hang out and spend some time there. And like we said in the announcement, the staff is absolutely wonderful at our library. All right. Next up, proclamation designating April 8th through 14th, 2012, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Whereas DuPage Public Safety Communications, known as DUCOM, plays a vital role in the protection of human life and property in our community. And whereas DUCOM has been successfully serving the public safety communication needs of the village of Villa Park and surrounding communities since 1975. And whereas while enduring long shifts in handling frequent life and death emergencies, DUCOM telecommunicators set high standards in performing their duties in a dedicated, diligent, and compassionate manner. And whereas DUCOM telecommunicators provide a critical communication link between the residents and police, fire, and emergency medical service providers. And whereas these individuals efficiently coordinate emergency services to ensure the health and safety of our residents, visitors, and travelers in our cities, towns, villages, districts, and on our highways, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. And whereas our public safety communications personnel daily serve the public in countless ways without due recognition by the beneficiaries of their services, therefore, be it resolved that the village of Villa Park proclaims the week of April 8th through 14th, 2012, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. In the village of Villa Park, it commends the devotion, contributions, and services of the DUCOM telecommunicators. Thank you. And I know our police and our fire use it consistently, it's part of our everyday lives. Any thoughts on it, chiefs? We've actually given a couple awards to some of the DUCOM people here recently.
Absolutely. I didn't have anything prepared, but you know, the telecommunicators out at DUCOM, you know, highly professional, highly trained, underappreciated, and they really, they are the second link in this whole chain of survival by, you know, from fire, emergencies, EMS, and police. I mean, the first thing people have to do is dial 911, first person they talk to on that phone is a telecommunicator. And a vital link, like I said, in that chain, and DUCOM does a terrific job.
Thank you, chief. All right. C, appointments to boards and commissions. Jessica, I'm going to say the last name wrong, Micret, is that right? To the Community Pride Commission. Can I have a motion for the appointment?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Make a motion.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
I'll second the motion.
Any questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. All right. Is Jessica here? All right. Then we will swear her in at the first Pride Commission meeting.
The commission.
And what's that?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? Fantastic. And then are there still vacancies on the Pride Commission? Trustee Davis?
I will be announcing this later, sir.
Very nice. Thank you. All right. Item five is public comments on agenda items, so from item six through nine, if there is anyone to speak on an agenda item. C, none. We will go to consent agenda. A, minutes from village board meeting for March 12th, 2012. B, minutes from village COW for March 12th, 2012. C, minutes for the budget workshop, March 14th to 2012. D, minutes from special meeting workshop for March 19th, 2012. E, minutes for executive session, February 13th, 2012. F, minutes for executive session, February 27th, 2012. I have two Fs. G, resolution to approve amendment of a contribution formula in 2006 amended and restated articles of agreement for Northeast DuPage Special Recreation Association. H, resolution establishing the fees, rules, and regulation for the village's swimming pools for 2012. Second reading of an ordinance of the village of Villa Park, adding hearing costs as penalties for administrative hearings. J, second reading of an ordinance of the village of Villa Park, amending the no parking zones on Villa Avenue. Can I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
I'll move for the consent agenda.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item seven, village clerk's report.
I have a couple items.
Okay.
I will report. It has to do with the Kiwanis Club of Villa Park, there are a couple events going on. The first one is the annual Vidalia Sweet Onion Sale. This is, you'll probably see forums around maybe some places, maybe online, but this is the, one of the big fundraisers that the Kiwanis do to raise money, and they give, there's a whole group of things they give towards Ned's Strut, Easter Seals, the schools, food pantries, and a variety of places. If you'd like to order, it's $10 for a $10 bag. Our librarian director is a Kiwanian. You can approach her, she could certainly do that. Manager Keener is in Kiwanis, you can get a form here at the village hall, I'm also in Kiwanis. You can go on my website, clerkkornicki@invillapark.com, and also you can order from me. But this is a great event, so if you have a chance to run into one of the Kiwanians, please order the onions. The other event is, you'll see these little cans called, said Eliminate Project, and in January, the Kiwanis Club presented the big project they're doing, and it's raising locally $40,000 to combat and eliminate maternal neonatal tetanus in 39 countries. It doesn't apply to the U.S., we don't have that here, but in many other countries. So you'll see this in various stores and restaurants, so if you would support it, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, approved bill listing. A, approved bill listing dated March 26th, 2012, in the amount of $983,233.33. Can I have a motion to approve the bill listing?
Mr. President.
Trustee Davis.
Make a motion to approve the bill listing.
Can I have a second?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
Second motion.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
Yes.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Nine, second reading of an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses and decrease the number of Class H liquor licenses. Can I have a motion for the second reading?
Mr. President.
Trustee Taglia.
I'll move for the second reading.
Can I have a second, please?
Mr. President.
Trustee Case.
Second.
Questions or comments for the board? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Case.
Yes.
Trustee Davis.
No.
Trustee Taglia.
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle.
Yes.
President Colleton.
Yes. Item 10, unfinished business, none. 11, new business, none. 12, village manager's report. Manager Gisakalas.
Just have a brief construction update, first with the Ardmore Bridge. The setting of the new precast bridge deck beams was completed last week. They're now focusing on securing these deck beams by attaching them to the adjacent piers with anchors. After that, they're going to grout the gaps and put in the keyways. Following that, they're going to start working on the superstructure, and then the installation of the new deck service. Still on schedule for June 2012 completion. For North Yell Water Main, they're installing the service lines, all the main work is completed, they're halfway completed with that. And for the Roseabout Road sidewalk project, we had the pre-construction meeting this morning. Work is scheduled to start on or about May 6th, and it's a 93-day calendar day completion for that project. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Thank you. Village attorney.
You'll report.
Thank you. I will start on my left. Trustee Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be lunch, y'all, hear me talk. I'm going to read this directly from Commissioner Blair's notes. The Community Pride Commission is looking for some new members. The Pride Commission runs several annual events, just to name a few. They run Paws on the Path, Chili Cook Off, Prairie Path Cleanup, Spirits Award, Pride Weeks, Business Planner Programs, as well as various other beautifications. If you have been looking for a way to get involved, this is the perfect opportunity, and it's fun, it's simple to get involved, too. Just go to the boards and commissions on the village website, download the application, and send it to President Colleton. If you want to get involved but think this may not be the commission for you, look for the other ones as well. Few hands make for light work, and the benefits there are awesome. And we also have openings on the traffic and safety, and the Police and Fire Commission, they are also taking applications. And the last thing I want to talk about tonight is, we've been blessed with this warm weather, and I myself, I don't know about the other board members, have been getting a lot of barking dog complaints, excessive barking dog complaints, and I've heard a few of them. So if you could, please pay attention to your dogs when they're outside barking for quite a while. If you could bring them inside, please, and be considerate of others. And that is all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Trustee Bullwinkle.
Thank you. Manager Gisakalas, one other question. When will the streetscaping project begin on Ardmore? Which my understanding is it goes from North Avenue to the train tracks. When is that slated to begin?
We have been waiting for I.D.O.T. approval for the Phase II engineering agreement, because they are funding it 80%.
Uh huh.
We just received an email back yesterday, so that will be on the next village board agenda to approve the contract, and then we can move forward with the engineering.
Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Taglia.
Trustee Case.
Do you want to, no, that's okay. No, that's all right, go ahead.
Okay, well, a couple of things tonight. First of all, the Citizens Police Academy and the civilian emergency response teams will be having an alumni training opportunity coming up on Tuesday, March 27th, from 6:00 till 10:00 p.m. And there'll be no fee charged for this, it's because the police officers got us a grant, so there's no cost involved for the residents to attend, so we would hope that all of the alumni and anyone interested could come out and join the program, so it's always worthwhile. I took it years ago, and it was a very excellent program, so put that on your calendars. Also, I was asked some questions this weekend about our form of government, and it seems that a lot of people really don't understand municipal government or how it's run. So I'm going to just do a quick information session. There is a website called the ILCMA, and if you guys want to log on to it, all the information is there. But just so people are aware, there are five statutory forms of municipal government. Okay? I won't read all of them, but we have the managerial form of government. What that means is, by state statute, the chief executive officer of our village government is the village manager. So just so people understand the roles of the trustees and the board, the village president, is we are the legislative body of the village, and we hire and select the village manager. And he is a professional manager, and there are requirements. He has to have the training, the education, and the experience. So that's by our state statute and by municipal ordinance. So those requirements must be satisfied. And he operates the village on a day-to-day basis, and all department heads report to the village manager directly. The role of the board is almost purely legislative. It's our job to figure out which ordinances we need to have or which ones we don't need to have. So I think that's something this board has been looking at. As well as creating new ordinances, we should be repealing ordinances that are out of date or unnecessary, or maybe they're harmful. Okay? So that's just a little bit about our form of government, and I will continue these sessions, but I know it's not very exciting. So just to get started, if people want to look, again, it's the Illinois City County Management Association, ILCMA, and if you look into that, you could educate yourself about the different forms of municipal government. So that's all I'd like to say about that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Taglia. Trustee Case?
Looking for an update on the North Avenue project, the building. Who can answer that one?
Well, if we don't have Manager Keener, we may not be able to have that one.
Probably why you skipped me, that's okay.
Okay. No, I would say Manager Keener probably would be best, possibly, oh, Greg could possibly answer, him and Marlon.
I toured the facility last week. They have all the grid work up for the ceilings, the tiles done. Dave was working on doors, that type of thing. So it's, we're shooting for, let's see, I know we're, tentatively, we wanted to get done by the end of March, we're probably two weeks away from completion, two to three at the most.
Where's the budget at?
Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I could, I can get you those numbers. Should be right on point.
Okay.
But I could, if you'd like, I could get you the numbers.
Yeah.
Quite a bit under.
Right. Okay.
But I can get you those numbers tomorrow if you want, so.
You get a change. Come on, man. As long as we're under.
We're good.
Thank you.
Your role.
All right. I have just a couple of things real quick. April 28th is coming up upon us quickly. It is the annual Earth Day Trail Cleanup. We will be going on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. It'll be for both of our trails, the Great Western and the Prairie Path. We need volunteers, we need help. If you have an organization or a club that wants to come on, I know the Cub Scouts always, every different Cub Scout troop out there sends kids out, sends the different kids out, gets them a service badge. The high school usually sends kids out, youth baseball sends kids out. If you want to get your block, you have a neighborhood watch, you want to come out and help us, please come out. If you want information, you can call 630-834-8500, extension 6059. That is the Pride Commission. You can also go to the Great Western Trail website, which is www dot friends of the Great Western Trails dot com. Again, www dot friends of the Great Western Trails dot com, and they'll give you more information. This will be, this will be rain or shine, and if you can wear log sleeve, wear log pads, bring gloves, because that'll be definitely what you need out there. We've, we've had years where we've pulled beds out of the trails, we've pulled bicycles, I think we pulled a front fender out one year, we've had some very file cabinets. You'd be amazed at what people decide to walk down the trail and throw into the woods. So please, come out and see that. Also was handed something by Al Stash, our fabulous cable commissioner, who does a lot of the production you see on our local cable show, but he filmed a race that I did about two weeks, three weeks ago against the mayor of Elmhurst. Myself and Mayor DeCiani did the race for hugger for the DuPage County Farm Bureau over at the Jewel in Elmhurst, and the proceeds on my part went to the Yorktown Ship Food Bank for Mayor DeCiani's part, I believe it went to the ICC Food Bank, I believe. Which one, Walkin Ministries Food Bank over in Elmhurst. This was, it was a great event. I think we collected over $3,000 worth of food for both of the food, for the both food pantries. I won again. So, but, but realistically, I will tell you, these, Al filmed the whole thing, and it was a great event, had a great time. Mayor DeCiani and I thoroughly enjoyed doing it last year, we enjoyed doing it this year. All the food and everything was actually donated by the DuPage County Farm Bureau. For those of you who don't know, DuPage County still does have working farms, so there is a very large farm bureau out here. And those will be, the times for the, the show will be 12:42 on Tuesday, 11:30 p.m. on Tuesdays, 11:04 on Wednesdays, 10:08 on Thursdays, those are both in the morning. On Thursday night, 11 o'clock Friday in the afternoon, 4 o'clock at 10 o'clock. Saturday at 8:30 p.m. and 10:30 a.m. Sunday at 10:30 a.m. and 6 p.m. Monday at 9:30 a.m. and Monday at 2 p.m. So if you're looking for something fun to wail on the mayor of Elmhurst, that would be me handing it to him pretty good. No, I'm kidding. We had a good time, it was a very fun time. And with that, we will go to item 15, public comments on non-agenda items. If you want to speak on a non-agenda items, please come up, you'll see a sign and sheet, put your name on there, just because it's for our clerks' records, and if you can keep comments, to three minutes. And like I said, if you've got something on the committee of the whole, feel free to wait till that item comes up on the committee of the whole.
Good evening. Dan Corning, 550 South Princeton Avenue, Villa Park, Illinois. I'm here to thank the trustees, in their individual private citizen capacity, for your support in last week's primary, to congratulate President Colleton on his nomination as a state senator. But the reason I'm here is to thank the citizens and voters of Villa Park for electing me as a Republican nominee for state representative. I'm proud to be from Villa Park. Thank you to the citizens for giving me the opportunity to run in the November election and represent Villa Park.
Thank you, Dan. Look at all the dignitaries today.
I'm happy to be one, I think. My name is Michael Ladon. I live at 1045 East Washington Boulevard in Lombard. And President Colleton and village trustees, tonight I present myself to you as your new representative on the DuPage County Board for District Two. A few weeks ago, Chairman Cronin appointed me to fill the spot resigned by Brian Sheehan, who was our district representative. And so my focus for the next nine months is to serve you, the citizens of Villa Park and this board, in any way that I can to bring the benefits of the county government to the local communities, especially Villa Park. Seeing that I live one block away from Villa Park on Washington, I kind of feel a very big kinship with the people here in Villa Park. I serve on a number of committees on the county board, technology, a couple of development committees, but most importantly, I serve on the stormwater commission for the county. So I do realize that for many of the citizens here in Villa Park and for this area, flooding and stormwater is a great concern, and I plan on being a resource for all of you, and especially for the citizens, again, to bring the benefits of the county to the local community. If there's anything that I can do, please feel free to call on me with your ideas relative to flooding and stormwater. Again, I'm very honored to be here this evening, representing you on the county board. If I can be of any assistance, please feel free to call on me. I'll say after the meeting to introduce myself to all of you personally. So thank you very much, and congratulations, President Colleton, on your win last week.
Congratulations to you on your appointment.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Scott.
I'm Scott Shepard, 235 North Michigan. So we have a legislative body, municipal government here, and the village manager is a chief executive. How did he get the job of being chief executive here?
Well, we can go through all that, but there was a search committee, and it was put together, and then an interview process by the board. That's how it's traditionally done.
And the board hired him.
Yes.
The board hired him.
The board is responsible, as Trustee Taglia stated, the board is responsible for hiring the village manager, and then the village manager is responsible for all department heads and all departments throughout the village of Villa Park.
So I assume he's under contract for X amount of years, or?
There is a contract, yes.
Right. So if the people of Villa Park do not want him, how do we fire him?
Well, that we can go through, Scott, but realistically, there would be a process that the board would have to go through more than the people would have to go through, and possibly that would be talking to your board members, and also talking to, you know, there will be an election in 2013 if you're not happy with the board members or the president as well.
I'm happy with Manager Keener. I was just wondering, if we wanted to get rid of a chief executive, how would we do it?
That would be the way.
Pressure the board.
The board would have to, the board would have to make that decision, and the board would be the ones that make the decision on the removal of the village manager.
Okay, so I elect you, and I trust you to elect or hire the.
Hire, yes.
And see that he's doing his job properly.
Yes.
We entrust that to you.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Scott. I'm going to hear from you at the capital improvements time on Committee of the Hole.
Good evening, Mount Kenneth C. Resident of Villa Park for 24 years. My address doesn't make a difference, I already walked the streets with a target on my back. I'm here before the board to alert them that I have complained for two years of odor crowding on a building in West Division. I own the building adjacent to it. With the inspector Lori, she's been able to get him to get two garbage removals per week. This way, I don't have to pick up his garbage. She has been able to ticket him once for overcrowding, but he's upped his game. Now six out of six apartments are overcrowded. The current procedure is that she contacts the landlord, says she wants to make an inspection, and then goes. The fox does not tell the farmer he's going into the hen house that night. What I believe we need to do is have an investigator, not an inspector, do this type of job. I have pictures, video, several complaints have been signed. I'm just looking after two years to finally get some relief from this. Also, the house across the street, the address is 243, there are six cars on a small driveway. It is a two-bedroom house that's been for sale for over a year. There are at least 11 people living in that house.
That's 243 Division?
Correct, sir. The, the building that I am contending with is 304 West Division.
And as I told you, I briefed our attorney, I'd want her to, I wanted her to give us a quick update. We spoke before the meeting, for the public, we spoke before the meeting. We're pushing for a, obviously being a non-home rule community, we've gone through this discussion a few times with, with the fact that we cannot fully adopt what is called the Crime-Free Housing Initiative. However, we are going to be taking it to the essentially furthest extreme we can as a non-home rule community, and I told you I'd get you the update right now, so I'm going to hand it over to our attorney, Kathy Or.
We have been meeting about it, we are in the process of compiling a list of all rental property, which is not an easy thing to go through the town. Once this list is compiled, you will be getting a notice, so that we will call you in to make the presentation. Presentation would be that if you are a landlord, you shall include in all your future leases an addendum that allows you to evict the person without notice. In the event, there are two reasons to call out our police department for Class A misdemeanors. So that still would be a problem if you suggest overcrowding. Our problem on overcrowding is that we cannot have a local law. It's federal fair housing, and so we'd have to look at the unit and their square footage, because there's a minimum requirement per square foot.
Exactly. Each, each unit are identical on that block, it is 164.70 square feet in a one-bedroom apartment. All of his are one-bedroom apartments, which constitutes three people per apartment. When you have four, four, five, 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 and four, the numbers don't add up.
I, I don't know by heart the actual square footage per person that allowed, but I will...
It is 50 per square foot. 70 for a one-bedroom with a single occupant, 50 per square foot for multiple.
Well, not only are we working on crime-free, but we are also working on stepping up our building code and administrative adjudication and fine process. And I am seriously hoping within the next 90 days, we will be able to undertake, if not one on crime-free, which we are moving forward very seriously on, we are also totally reorganizing our administrative adjudication process.
On the Division Street Association, we already put in our leases the drug-free housing, we were...
We can go a little bit farther than that, too.
We can even go further than that.
A lot, a lot of the owners on the block are just stellar. They've been there for 30 years. I'm the new guy on the block, I bought my building nine years ago, it was the worst building on the block. Now, it's one of the best. But what I'm running into is that overcrowding, his garbage, there's another individual on there that owns four buildings, he's buying up buildings in Villa Park, he is constantly fined. If you can't afford to buy the building, fix it up, and maintain it, you shouldn't be buying it.
Well, we also, we are also having the same issue, and we are working towards, with the manager and the board, on looking at possible inspecting, increasing our inspections. There is also, we have the same problem with the North Avenue Townhomes as well. And we've been probably in three to four years of litigation with certain residents, with certain owners of those buildings as well. The litigation, the best I can say is we keep banging away. And we keep pushing, and we keep moving forward on it. What I would like is any copies of those you're willing to make sure our police have, and make sure, I'm sure you've given them to our community development or inspectors.
Oh, the pictures of the garbage for the last two years, of course. Then she ticketed him, as he starts paying the tickets, he's the only one on the block that has two garbage pickups now, so you can't get them on that. My suggestion to her is, since he does pay his water bill here in Villa Park?
Right.
You check that water bill. I have nine other owners on the block, we've averaged out what our bill is with the correct amount of people, it'll be like a red flag.
Those are some of the issues we can go through. There's also going to be issues allowed along the means of utilizing fire inspections as well. So there's going to be a lot of, in this crime-free, it's not just going to be looking at the crime, but it'll also be looking at how many people are in buildings as well.
Absolutely.
So we'll be pushing for that, you'll, you'll get that letter, and we'll make sure you're at the meeting. And I, like I said, tonight, that's why I also want you to meet our new police chief as well.
Yeah.
Mr. President?
Yes. Okay, thank you for your time.
Well, there's one other thing we're working on. Rather than allowing prepaid fees for building code garbage, et cetera, but to bring each one of these people to a hearing so that we can determine the fine based on the number of times that they've been pulled in. So we really are trying to reorganize our system to give it more meat and push.
One other thing, I know I'm going over my time, I apologize. There is a house on Wisconsin and Division that's been burnt out for five years. I had just heard that it's on the demolition list. When's that going to happen? Any timeframe?
The best I can do is have Manager Keeter call you back on that one.
It's already been issued to the village prosecutor.
Oh, there we go.
And it shall, the citation shall be issued, and that is underway. We had, that was part of our meeting at the, when we were working on crime-free. So the process is underway.
Great. If I could be of any help with the evidence that I have and all that, I'd be glad to stop, talk to anyone you would want to, need to talk to, and I would just like to get this done and be of help.
Well, and I could definitely, I'd like to give you, make sure we get you the update on when that house is getting demoed. That's been a sore spot for a bunch of us, and we've been to court over it consistently. I think the last time we went to court over it, they went out and painted it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It must have been set on fire twice.
They took a burned-out house that's been set on fire twice, and instead of tearing it down, they repainted it.
I called the, the former police chief three times, that kid's from the west side of Division Street, made their clubhouse.
Right. And then I know on that safe block, we also threw pressure from the board, we got, what was it, the garage torn down, that was halfway falling down. So the hardest part about a lot of this is the time it takes.
Right, right. And just like the police force needs a neighborhood watch program, the inspector or the, yeah, the inspectors need our eyes also.
I agree.
And I'm always willing to hand off a picture after storms, after evictions, when everything's put in the street, I believe they have 24 hours to cover that, and then it must be taken away. I help with, some residents are a little elderly, and they steal the shopping carts from Jewel. Rather than complain about it, I put them on my truck and bring them back to Jewel. I got a free cola last week. I don't want to be the problem, I want to be the solution.
I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
And we've got your phone number or no? Please leave it with actually the chief of police before you leave.
I'm on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President, board members, my name is Roger Compton. I don't live in Villa Park, but I do own an apartment building at 246 West Division Street. And to follow up on Mr. Mount's complaints, I'd like to talk to you just briefly about the gang problem we're having in Villa Park. Now, I've got some photographs here of some of the gang signs that they put on our buildings, fences, garbage cans. They're staking out their territory. Now, you might think with our economy that it's easy to rent an apartment, it's not. And last year, I had 19 months of vacancies in a six, in a six-flat unit. One was for 11 months, another one was for eight months. And I lost two good prospects to rent my apartments. In my building, this is just as good as Mr. Mount's, and we are probably two of the more energetic landowners trying to keep up our buildings, because we do not want to end up like the west side of Addison Road. Now, we've got to get ahead of this curve. The gangs are moving in, and we've got to do something about it. Now, last year, myself, Mr. Mount, and other members of our association met with your former chief, and in the 15 years that I've owned this building, I didn't have a need to call the police for anything, but the last three years, I have. And I must say, the officers were very professional, and I can say that personally, because I'm a retired police officer. They did their job well, and I can't fault them. However, we need to do something. We asked for a neighborhood watch program. We were told that yes, we would get some assistance in developing a neighborhood watch program. We were told that we would get some signage posting the area that we have a neighborhood watch program. It didn't occur. That was the end of it. Mr. Mount and myself and others supplied information to the police department that resulted in at least one drug dealer being taken off our block. And I commend the officers for doing that. But when I have people actually moving in with a trailer full of furniture, and they come in the driveway, and they see these gang signs, I'd like to pass these along if you don't mind, just take a look at them. You can see, the village comes out, and they'll sandblast the fences and, and clean up the brickwork the best they can. But then, the gangs come back and they do it again, on the same spot. I'm frustrated. My property value is going down. It's harder to rent. What are we going to do? I can't sell out. If I could, I would, but I'd lose money on the deal. I haven't taken a dime out of my building in 15 years, it's all gone back into the building, back into the landscape, trying to improve my property. You tell me, what are we going to do? Now, I'm very, I'm very glad to see your new chief of police. As I said, I'm a retired police officer, and, and Chief Pavelcheck's reputation has preceded him. He's a good cop, and I'm sure he's going to do the job. But he's going to, just like Heilemeyer, he's going to need some help from you. He's going to need manpower, he's going to need money, he's going to need time. You can't just expect that the average patrolman is going to go out there and, and stop these kids. It's not going to happen. You're going to have to have some kind of a crime unit, and they're going to have to be aggressive, and you're going to have to back them up. If you don't, you just waste your time and our money. And I would, I would enjoy it if you'd come by in a couple of weeks when the flowers are up, and take a walk around my building, 246 West Division. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. We'll definitely be by, I would, and I appreciate you calling. And this would be something that everybody in the village needs to know. If you do see graffiti, call the village immediately. We have a program, we will come out, we will get it done. I grew up in the city, and I, I know how, in Rogers Park, right by the L tracks, the graffiti comes, you got to take it away. It comes, it comes, and it's, and it's a constant battle, and I know the city of Chicago is a constant battle with it. As far as support, I'm going to leave what sort of measures we will be doing for the chief to give us as many opportunities, as many options as we have, for the board to support all those options to get it done. I don't think anybody on the board would take it lightly to say that this isn't a problem, or this isn't something that's starting to creep. We're not the only suburb dealing with it either. It's started to creep from the city of Chicago, and has been for probably the past five, six years, it's been creeping out here, and every suburb's been going after it as best they can. Hopefully, the chief and his lieutenants and deputy chiefs have a solution that they can bring to the board, and we can, we can approve it and get it through.
Thank you. I, I appreciate what you're saying. But if you look at those pictures, you'll see what we got going. We got Latin Kings, we got the K-13. And these are not people to be messing with. I mean, we've got to do something about this. And I do appreciate you taking the time to listen to me here, and, but I'm really, I'm really frustrated. I don't know what to do next. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Compton. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Please, if you, and I can't stress over and over every time we have these meetings, please call, call the 911. Anytime you see anything that's suspicious, anytime you need help, even if you don't think it's, it's valuable information for the police to have, we need your help. I definitely will say, now that Chief Pavelcheck is hurt, I imagine the neighborhood watch people will be calling you tomorrow. I, I have a neighborhood watch, one of the first things I did when I moved into Villa Park was start a neighborhood watch on my block. We've always had a safe block, I think every so often, somebody leaves their car unlocked right in the front of their driveway, gets all their change taken out, but I can't...
That actually happened on Harbor Street, Yale, and Princeton on Friday night, in the hours of 11:30 and evening.
Always, every spring, we seem to get, and we tend to catch a, the younger set out there, and they're going through for open cars, looking for CDs and change. So a good recommendation with that brought up is, please, lock your cars at night. It's a very simple solution, it, it's very easy to do, and it gets, it, it stops them from going in or grabbing anything that's easy. But with that, I will say, if you want a neighborhood watch, please call our police department. Chief Pavelcheck, Trustee Taglia talked tonight about the, the CAPS program, or not CAPS, CPA, Citizens Police Academy, and the CERT program. If you want to get more involved, these would be good opportunities as well. But we, our police force number is 43 officers. They can't be everywhere. We need your help. You have to call, you have to call the police. You have to call when there's problems. And we need you not to call the direct number, you need to call 911 so that it's documented, so that it's taken down, so that there's a record. If there's an area that's a problem, and there's no record of how long the problem is, it doesn't help us. We need to essentially target the hardest-hit areas. So with that, we will go on to, anyone else for public comments? All right, with that, we will recess to Committee of the Hole. I had a one discussion of proposed FY 2012, 2013 budget and 2012, 2013 to 2017 Capital Improvement Program. Manager Schalles, you want to lead us in this real quick?
Sure. Just to recap, we had budget presentations on March 12th, March 14th, and March 19th. There have been no changes to the budget since the handouts that were given to the board on March 19th. The public hearing and the first reading of the budget is scheduled for April 9th. We do have a balanced budget. We are projecting a fund balance of 92 days as of April 30th, 2012, and of 89.8 days as of April 30th, 2013. And just as a reminder, our goal for our minimum fund balance is 90 days, so we are achieving a minimum fund balance. We're also projecting a positive fund balance in all the other operating and capital funds in this fiscal year, and this is probably for the first time in at least four years that we are going to have positive fund balances in all our operating and capital funds.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for the board? Questions or comments for the public? Hi, Scott.
So I understand in this capital improvement, there's street money. Where's Michigan Avenue on that? North Michigan, north of St. Charles.
During the capital improvement program discussion, I handed out a list of streets that are going to be receiving... that are going to be receiving cores. You have to do a subsurface investigation before we can determine what type of improvements are needed to any street. And then, once those cores are completed, we have about $450,000 plus or minus in discretionary funds available this year for resurfacing. So North Michigan was on that street, of course, to be taken, so it's possible it could be done this year, or it could be done the following year, depending on how the cores come back and what the final cost is relative to the other streets on the list.
Now, Michigan Avenue, where I'm speaking of, is from St. Charles to Division.
That's correct.
So they're gonna take cores off randomly up and down that?
Well, they're not random. They'll select the locations.
Okay. So you'll know more after those cores come back?
That is correct.
So according to this, this is the budget and the capital improvements program through 2013 through 2017. That's four years.
The operating budget is just the next fiscal year. The capital improvement program is more a planning document for the larger reconstruction projects.
The capital improvement is not the actual budget. It's just a plan-
The plan.
... on what we would like to accomplish and where we would like to go with it. The budget is just year to year.
Okay.
Years two through five are not funded. Only year one is funded.
Okay.
So we'll have more information once we do the cores. Would you like us to contact you once we have the cores?
Yes, please. You all have my number, and I'm not giving it out on air.
You wanna give it, come on, give it out on air, Scott.
Not unless you're gonna buy something.
We'll make sure, we will make sure that you get the update on when we're doing it and when we get the results back.
Right, thanks.
Okay? And please, Scott, pass that along to your block as well. Your both blocks.
Right.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Amy Jenkins. I don't know Mr. Shepherd, but I actually live at 119 North Michigan Avenue. And I was here tonight to learn the process for how the road repair is prioritized, because I know I'm on the first block. I'm assuming you're on the second block.
Yeah, but I fight for the whole state.
That's good. So I would like to be included on the core survey as well, please.
You don't want Scott coming to your house and telling-
He's welcome to come to my house.
He doesn't know where she lives, huh?
But you know, honestly, I've sat idly for the last couple of years, seeing Harvard be resurfaced, Princeton's been resurfaced, and our street is really in disrepair. It's dangerous for my small children to be learning to ride their two-wheelers on. It's washing away our yards because there are no curbs. It's beginning to become hazardous to our vehicles, where we don't even drive down our own street anymore. We take Elm, I mean, we live right on the corner, so we never even go down Michigan because it's awful. So I'm curious to know, once the core survey does come back, is there a weighted prioritization between cost-benefit analysis, or if you can do three streets for the same price as one more severely deteriorated street, how does that get weighed?
Well, you more or less hit the nail on the head. If the street is so badly deteriorated that it's no longer a candidate for resurfacing, then you have to go to the next level, which is reconstruction, which is about three to five times more costly than a resurfacing. So the cores will tell us whether the street can be salvaged for a resurfacing and how much life we expect to gain by doing that. If you're only gonna gain three years by doing a resurfacing, then we have to program it for a reconstruct, which is a lot more costly. So then, the decision is gonna be made again. Do you want to resurface 10 streets or reconstruct one street?
I'm assuming a core survey was done when the 2009 resurfacing project-
Cores are done for every street that's-
Because I know Michigan has been ranked in the top three worst streets of Villa Park for at least the past three years. So do we have the results from when the core survey was done in 2009?
No, there were no cores taken in 2009 on North Michigan.
Okay. And so when do we anticipate the results of those surveys?
Well, we have to get everything done prior to May 1 because it's in this fiscal year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And if you would like to leave your number, but leave it with Vitas. And then he could correspond and contact. Vitas is our director of Public Works. Tonight, he's sitting at his village manager, but he's our actual director of Public Works, so he would be, he's a good resource to have, especially when it comes to fixing the street, okay?
Great.
Or you could always email publicworks@invillapark.com if you don't want to leave a call or otherwise.
Great. Thank you.
I have one more question.
No. All right. Over to Scott.
If it comes back that the cores say resurfacing will do it, oh, we need curbs and everything else, and I know you put those in when they do it. If it comes back saying it needs a total reconstruction, which is what has been assumed for the six, almost eight years I've been back and forth up here, what happens? It goes on the next year? You decide? Because to tell you the truth, you all know that I'm not gonna sit around and you say, "Oh, but we can get 10 more streets done for that." I don't care about the other 10 streets at this point. If you can get 10 streets done for what ours is, I'm beyond patience. You know, I can wait another year for it to be reconstructed, but saying that we're not gonna do it because we can repave 10 other streets, let those 10 other streets wait, and then reconstruct another street and let 10 more wait, then maybe you'll get your referendum passed to get them all done. Because the more you start keep putting Band-Aids on the other ones and not addressing the ones that really need the issue, you're not gonna get the money. You'll never have the money. And I think you know that. Because when you guys say it costs almost $1 million to reconstruct our two blocks of streets, which is the numbers I've heard a few times, 3/4 of $1 million, you're never gonna get that money. So you've gotta make a choice sooner or later. I had to put a roof on my house last year. I didn't have the money, but guess what? It needed to be done. Sometimes you just gotta do it and bite the bullet, put other things on the back burner.
True enough, Scott. And we will hit you on before May 1 with what the core results are, and then that decision will have to be made by the board.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else on the item 1?
Hi, my name is Morgan Rickle. I live on 115 North Michigan. I am Amy and Scott's neighbor, and I just wanted to ask that I would be included on the core samplings also. I know my husband and I had an experience a couple of years ago, one of those torrential downpours, when we got about seven inches of rain in three hours. But I do know that street is one of the few places in Villa Park tied into the mainline drains because it totally backed up into our house. So we've obviously had a lot of frustration with that, too, not just because of the disrepair of the road, but what it's doing to our house.
Okay. Can you make sure we get, send the, you know what? If you could include anybody you want on that list, if one of you wants to sort of act as the person to send the email?
Okay.
We can make sure that we send it out to sort of a blanket recipient list, if that would work for somebody willing to take that on?
Okay.
Once we hear back from the geotechnical firm, we'll have a better idea when they expect to have the report completed, so you're not waiting on it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Because we can get the work physically done by May 1, but then they have to produce a report with their recommendations also, so that may take a few weeks after that to get that out of them.
We've done the construction line of work before, so we're familiar with it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Item 2, advance to bill listing, A through I. Oh, we do need a consensus. Can I have a consensus to move proposed FY 2012/13 budget to the formal and 2012/13 to 2017 capital improvements program to the formal? Consensus, please.
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Carter?
Yes. All right. Advance to bill listings, A through I. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anyone from the board with any questions? Consensus?
Trustee Taglia?
Yes.
Trustee Bullwinkle?
Yes.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Trustee Davis?
Yes.
President Carter?
Yes. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Villa Park, have a great week. We will see you after Easter, so everybody have a fantastic Easter.